He works right here? It's the agenda. One copy of the budget. Hi Chief. Good day. I'm gonna listen to this here.
I thought I needed minutes for talking.
That's what I'm thinking. Resolution, I don't think that's today.
All right, I call to order the annual meeting of the electors to thank you all for coming. If you would please stand for Glenn Lee. Glenn Lee.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Lori, if we could do a roll call.
Renee.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Nola.
Here.
Jerry.
Here.
Gerald.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
And I know that you have been collecting names of the electors' presence. Do you need any more?
Nope, I think I've got everybody.
Excellent. So at this time, we will go through a review of the budget with questions and comments. Obviously, before, we did do a working session where we went through line by line. On this one, we can go through any sections that people may have questions, thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns on. Obviously, we made some adjustments before in that working session, and we can work through the things that we had concerns with. And we do have, the public comment mic is on, if anyone would like to come up and ask anything about that as well. Did you have something?
Right, I have a couple of issues I looked at and saw confusion on. Well, not confusion, but I remember we spoke about the deputy supervisor position. I know you're very, very busy right now because, like I said, we're going through so much.
Right.
And I know we can adjust that, so is it really necessary to have a deputy supervisor at this time?
Well, so at this time, I would not put one on because I think it is too early to exactly do that. We've obviously overwhelmed the zoning department and the assessing department is being redone a little bit. It's getting its feet under itself, and so there are some adjustments happening there. And it may be a thing that becomes necessary still in the future if it is still this overwhelmed. But at this time, I don't, I think it would be too early. I think maybe six months in the future, it may be appropriate to assess that at that.
So we're just saying, just in case.
That's basically set up as six months.
Okay. That's why I think I saw the 17, so.
Yep, yep, that's me this.
Okay, on page three on the zoning ordinance, Department 371. I saw that zoning admin assistant, it was from, we used $37,000 in 239 last year, and why is it up to $64,754?
Because Lorene is retiring in July, and we need to bring in another person, and we're hoping for some overlap between Lorene and the other person. And this other person is actually, we're planning on being full-time with benefits, so that's why the numbers are there.
So the plan here is to keep the salary the same, but to increase the hours, to expand our capacity there. And because it is so extensive, requires a lot of training, a lot of learning, getting up to speed, that is why that number should go down next year, but this year is higher.
Do we have a person already sought it for that?
No.
No.
That's gonna be in the next couple of months.
Yeah. Page eight, estimated revenues. Now, this is revenue, this is income, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I also, I was curious, it went from $25,120, and then it was over $46,582, so I was curious about that as well.
What was that again?
It's a...
No, I, what was the reason?
Well, it's income, it's revenue, so I'm not quite sure exactly where it's coming from, that's why I'm asking.
Where you, I'm sorry, which?
It's on Department 000, on page eight. S.A., Levy, Whitehall Road.
Oh, that's my sewer.
Is that the sewer?
Yep.
It's zero U's and over $46,582, so I was curious about that as well.
Are you looking at people?
The sewer money's come in with taxes, so I haven't done the year-end, we haven't done the year-end general adjustments for taxes that we've received from the winter. Yeah, so that's why they're showing activity in zero. These are the estimated numbers based on store folk, but it could change because they're always, luckily, we're starting to add more people on, so, but I left the numbers the same.
And because some of the things are currently happening.
Yes.
Right, that's why we're counting from zeros, our $46,582.
Yeah, exactly.
Good. Got anything else?
I had something on the, I'm looking for the page, on the wastewater, or not wastewater, but on page two, salary part-time maintenance. We're gonna have more people?
Yes, well, we're budgeting for more people, hoping to get more people.
Okay.
So we're budgeting for hopefully four people.
Okay.
And that's part-time.
Part-time.
There'll be some more people through, until the snow flies.
And you're hiring now?
We are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
Yeah, I may, I may, I have a question about the fire chief's salary increase. My name's Tony Barnes, Dalton Township resident, in town in Meadowmore Lane. The current proposal is to, I see that the lowest admiral's increased the pay up to $55,000 a year. He's one of the lowest, if not the lowest paid fire chiefs in the Muskegon County, full-time fire chief. I think it would be appropriate to get him up to $60,000 a year. He would still be the lowest paid fire chief, full-time fire chief in the county, but this guy puts his life on the line every single call, and it could be, who knows what happens in any call, it could be the last call. So I think that we should probably look at moving that to $60,000 a year. I do have another question on the full-time maintenance at $750, which is an increase of 50 cents. The neighboring townships that have full-time maintenance, they're at $1850 an hour, and I think it would be a nice advisory motion to increase the full-time maintenance to $1850 an hour. That would at least help them out when they're working in the summer, in the cold winter, upshoveling, or whatever they may be doing, but I think that would be advantageous to us, to make sure that we're gonna retain the help that we do have out here. And there was one other spot I was looking at. This should be on the very last page, I think it is? Where there's a cadet firefighter is listed at $820 something, $17 an hour. That isn't even the state minimum wage. I think the language should just be minimum wage, so we're always current?
Yep.
That was my idea.
Yeah, that was the, we talked about that, yeah. I didn't realize that either, I just, it was, yeah.
Correct, yeah. The minimum wage should definitely be, it's the minimum wage, so it just keeps up with that number. It was frozen a number of years ago.
Yep.
For the increases for personnel, we're obviously making increases on the salary for the fire chief and for full-time maintenance. I think those are reasonable increases. To increase them more, I think is also a reasonable suggestion. I think it would definitely make sense to do that over the coming years. I agree.
Oh, wait. You don't, you don't think they shouldn't have that happening now? To me, that, they should at least be comparable to the other townships around us, I think we should do that now.
He said, he said to bring them even higher, though.
They're, it's just like raises, like every year, a year, six months.
Right now, we started $60,000, then we're increasing?
Right, that's, that's fair, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Need to look out for a chief.
Tony, I've been sounding really uneducated here. Tony, how much do fire chiefs make? How much do fire chiefs make?
Yes, I didn't bring my screenshot with me, but there's, I may be the chief that can answer. He's usually given it to us in the, you know, report when I've asked for it before, but I don't have a copy of it with me. Depends on the municipality, how many people they have. We're pretty much the same as Eccleson Township, and I can research how much that chief makes, but start comparing us to Muskegon Township, they're, they're much larger, and they've got more staff that are full-time.
If I may, Ashley Johnson, Dalton Township resident, 3161st Street. If we think about what Dalton Township is, how much more responsibility does our chief have because of the lakes, because of the trails, because of all of these things that other townships at a comparable size don't have? I think he puts his life on the line every day, but also he goes through extra trainings. I mean, my husband and I walk our dogs every day at Flint Lake Park, and they were out there at, I think, 8:00 o'clock the other night, training on paper thin ice. What, I mean, he's training, not only he's receiving the training, but he's training others, so he's got a big responsibility with what we've got here in Dalton Township.
I may, yes, go ahead. First off, I apologize for my attire to all of you. I'm actually supposed to be training our fire academies today, so I'd love to come here and do this. Thank you for the offer of the wages, and I'm a trustee to explain to you what a chief makes. And I'm not, and anybody's known me and known the 11 years I've been here, what I started at was actually less than what people in the town make. Which, that's fine, I don't, I don't do the job with cash. That was not, that was not my, my issue. Dalton Township, there's 15 fire departments in Muskegon County. Dalton Township is the seventh department in the county, meaning we're too small to be big, we're too big to be small. The closest fire department to me runs about 400 homes. The full-time staff department, which is, I guess, we are actually ahead of that. I didn't put in a request for package for any of that, because I've never, a bit bigger than 10 years knows, I've never asked her in, and I will ask her, basically. That's not my responsibility. I work what I pay for. A number is a number. To give you a ballpark of what average chiefs make, or most chiefs make in Michigan, if you were to run the number, I can, I can be happy to put it off the chief website for you. The average fire chief makes, and then jurisdictional sizes, but we, based on 36 square and the call volume we run, the average fire chief in that area makes about $65,000, up to about $135,000. That's what she deserves. So, yes, am I under that rate? Yes, I'm not going to tell anybody that I deserve that. I do what I do, they'll know what I do, and that's what I do. It's what it is, it's what it is, I'm not going to stand here and justify why, why not, so I appreciate the electricity right now, but I will tell you from my honest opinion, when I took the job 11 years ago, I think, you know, you were in here, I remember the wage, which was about, from where I came from, was about a $70,000 hour pay cut. But I took it because I was that invested in wanting to make Dalton Township better, and I hope, in my 11 years, that I've somewhat succeeded. I'm not sure, but at least in my mind, I do. So, again, those of you that have supported us, I thank you for that, and I will leave it up to the electors. I will obviously abstain today because it does involve my staff and my, so I will abstain from anything today, but I wanted to give you a little background. I guess, I am underpaid, but if you were to follow standard, but I'm not going to sit here and beg or plead and say, you need to raise my wages. Can I tell you how many hours I put in? Yes, I can tell you how many hours I put in last year. I put in just shy of $5,000.
Full-time jobs.
And that is what it is. Again, but I will qualify, and I think I've told every board, again, using Mrs. Fowler for that machine figure, it must be the most, I can't find out. I will, I will qualify, quantify anything I've ever done as an organization, if it's transparent as possible, and I will show you any document if you want to see, just request it, I have it on the desk in the morning. That's all, I think. Mr. Supervisor? Yeah. And I think the chief would be a fair start with him, would be $70,000 a year. I think that'd be a fair start up around, because he's, he's working double-time. And he deserves that, he's out there every day. I hear him drive by my house every day, overtime today. So, in my opinion, he's worth at least $70,000 a year, I believe, because he does risk his neck every day he goes out there. As a first responder myself, I know exactly how that feels. I feel underappreciated, to put your neck on the line every day, not knowing if you're gonna come home that day. Accidents do happen, so 20 years as a corrections officer, I understand, and I believe that's what he's worth. I mean, that's what my captain's making.
And if you divide that 5,000 hours into 365 days, that's a minimum of 13 hours, a little over 13 hours every day of the week, 24/7.
Correct.
Okay? Yeah, that's overtime.
Yes, my opinion, he deserves more.
And Tony?
So, I, I agree, and I appreciate the trustee, Nick, for bringing that up. I agree with him. I believe at the number 10 on the agenda would be an advisory motion that anybody here can go down and make a motion of. So, I would be prepared to make that motion to modify the budget with not only the chief at $70,000, but at the maintenance, full-time maintenance at $1850. I do have a question, though, regarding the deputy supervisor. We've never had one in Dalton, and I'm not sure why we would want one now. I mean, I understand there might be some changes in turnover in both the assessing department and potentially, well, the zoning office, but I would, I think, because a treasurer and a clerk shall have a deputy supervisor made, so you can do it legally through Michigan Township Association, it's optional. We've never had one, so my concern would be is to have a deputy supervisor with that particular title, maybe you just need another office assistant, potentially, versus a deputy supervisor. And I think that you might be able to give a little more support on that if that was the actual title versus deputy supervisor. It's just my two cents.
Yeah, that is, that is reasonable, and once you get, once the population increases by a few thousand people in a township like this, you a lot of times are starting to get township managers, similar to a city manager, and that's another direction that people go in. I know Ada just recently added one, a population of 14,000 people. So something in, in that direction is reasonable, and they have that same debate. On these, on the specific raises, so we already have raises planned in, and obviously, there's a discussion of higher raises. Do people think that it would be reasonable to split some of these differences a little bit, rather than jumping up so high and then maybe plateauing for a few years?
I think that would be, as a point of order, something to discuss after a motion, to me, in my opinion.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable to discuss the amounts beforehand. If we did something like the fire chief for $65,000, full-time maintenance at $18 per hour, that would be a, I believe, a $7,000 increase for the fire chief and a $1 increase per hour for full-time maintenance. Seems reasonable. Yes?
I don't know the chief's personal life. However, I can speak to what I know about myself. I'm a second-year kindergarten teacher at Freinat Public Schools. Two years of experience at Freinat Public Schools, I'm making somewhat in comparison to what he's been making over 11-year time span. To me, and I don't put my life on the line every day, I know chances are I'm coming home to my husband, and if something were to happen to my husband, I cannot afford the way I live now without his salary. And for me, for someone who puts his life on the line daily and has how many years of experience here, 11, he said, that's not acceptable.
Let's face it, he's four years, five years from retirement.
That's not, that's not acceptable. To the person who's making sure we are all safe every single day, training people to also make sure we're safe every single day. I mean, I'm assuming chief already married?
Yes.
He has a family to come home to.
Someone that hasn't killed me yet.
He has a family to come home to, and thinking like, if he's supporting his family, putting his life on the line is one thing, but $55,000 a year for that is sad.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Well, you never know what they're gonna go out on, what all comes up that they run into.
No, so, no, chief, so my, so my comparable question is, how does that compare to the average service member that actually only gets paid $1,300 per month for your freedoms to do everything?
Well, that doesn't serve us here, because that's a, that's a federal issue, we're talking about a top office.
Well, I get that, but it is comparable, because this is the life that he chose, where an army person is the life that they chose, as I think.
I agree, I agree, sir. I chose to be a teacher. I knew that I was going to be underpaid when I, when I went to school for that.
I did not, I did not want gratitude when I joined the army. I did, because that's what I wanted to do.
As a point of order, there is a motion on the floor?
There's no motion yet.
I thought you just made a motion.
No, there's not yet, I'll be in support of them.
You'll be in support of them?
But I would, Gerald, I agree, if you wanna make the, go with the national average for the chief, I'm good at that, because that's what the, you know, active duty gets.
And if the chief's files wanted to make comment, I would like him to be able to make that comment.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is very, it's not around me.
I'd like to make a statement.
My, my point is that, Mr. Judge, you are correct. 32 years ago, I chose this career. 11 years ago, I chose to leave where I was at, to come to the great state of Michigan. Although, I was in Chicago, who's gonna hold that against me?
Yes.
Yeah. The whole culture shock. Again, you are all correct, I did choose the shock. I did choose this lifestyle, and I raised mentally challenged child, and I have a son that's also on the job now, and I have 16 great employees that make us great. It's very humbling as a person that doesn't, well, I can just tell you that I have a lot more that concerns me than, than my wages, and again, I appreciate everyone of your comments, and it's very humbling. I will, again, abstain from anything that I do. Again, I work for, for you. I don't, I don't do this, I do it for dicks, let's be honest. I don't like it that much. Mr. Barnes, you humbly say four years, that's what my wife keeps telling you, I'd like another 10. But my point is, I can give you comparisons, and that's, as your given right to make a decision, or to be or not be. I want, I want everybody to know that this is, as come as it does, applies to me, I did not know it was coming today, which kind of draws me some discontent, because I'm usually pretty on the budget. Again, I appreciate it, and I will not change the $5,000 hour to value anymore, if it comes through a barn. It's an inside joke. But I, please, whatever it ends up being, don't think that since this week is over, I'll opt out to go back to training firefighters, that I'm going to stop my degree by, I'm going to continue to do every inch I have there.
So, we have lots of candidates, we're gonna go, Renee, first?
First of all, we keep bringing it back to Dalton Township, and I recognize that that's where we're at, and that's what we're doing, but in support and, and one of the things that we've all been sharing is that he doesn't just work in Dalton, he's running out to other places, too. And so, so we say 32, was it 32 square miles?
36, ma'am.
36 square miles, but I believe you're going further than that.
It's actually 36 plus 10 to the contract to Cedar Creek, which comes up to about $11,464.
Thank you. So, that being said, I'm not sure exactly, but can I make a motion that we upgrade his pay to $65,000, up to $70?
I think that's on number 10.
I'm gonna say 65, and incrementally increasing it to 70. Why, Mr.?
Incrementally throughout the year, do you mean doing 65 this year, 70 next year? Just like that?
Mr. Betterman?
Yeah.
When I was hired here in 2010, I was told, which I completely agree, and I am the only chief that does not have a contract, nor do I want one, because, not, not that I think contracts are bad, it's always been said, the previous administration, who's been here for quite a few years, has played, played the game, as they called it. I'm not a game player, I will not be a game player. I would prefer, ma'am, with all respect, that we just talk about this year, and we leave it there, because again, if I don't do well back here, I don't deserve rates. It's just my own personal humble experience that I had to pay the rates every year we went, I went seven, six and a half years of earnings. So that'd be $39,000 now, so, again, I, I appreciate that, ma'am, but I don't personally believe that we need to top body incremental, I think we need to pay for performance, is how I think we should, with all respect. Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to $70,000 this year, and $18 for maintenance, I think that's a good, that's fair. So I make that motion, raises paid to $70,000 a year, and maintenance $18.
And hearing these comments, Renee, do you want to move forward with your motion, or did you want to withdraw that?
I'm gonna withdraw mine.
And Tony?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't wanna second the motion, because all of us here can, because I don't know if we're in that spot of the agenda just yet, but I don't think I was done addressing a few things. I'm not sure why the salary resolution for supervisor clerk and treasurer has zero increase, when the federal cost of living increase is 1.3%, I think comes up to $555 more for the clerk treasurer supervisor. When I started here, there hadn't been a pay raise for any elected official in over a decade. And the rumor was, not the rumor, but the mentality was, is the chief will never make more than supervisor, for whatever reason, and I don't think it was planned out this way, but it's been a male supervisor and female clerk and treasurer. So it was said that the supervisor got like $200, maybe $300, $280, something like that, more than the clerk and the treasurer. I think it was kind of sexist, and if we're not gonna walk the walk, then we shouldn't talk the talk. So I made sure we made the same increase for the treasurer and clerk as a supervisor, which I think their judiciary, judiciary responsibilities aren't the same, but to go back to not doing an increase, because you're afraid, doesn't make any sense. I think the increase for the full-time elected officials, clerk supervisor and treasurer, should be modified to the cost of living increase at the federal level, which is 1.3%. So I'm prepared to make that motion when the time comes, but with respect to the trustees, Cedar Creek gets $5,000 a year, is what they get per, you guys are $4,000 a year, so I think that needs to be amended also to, I mean, we're, they only have a third of the resolutions that we do in Dalton, so I think we need to increase the trustees also to at least what Cedar Creek is, and I believe Blue Lake is at $4,600. I can verify it, but I think those resolutions need to be modified, and I'm prepared to make that motion once that point of the agenda gets here.
Okay. Yeah, that is, that is reasonable, so the approach that I took so far, not going with those raises, is that we didn't take these positions for the pay, we had more of an aspect of duty to try and take the role, and that obviously Dalton has some financial issues currently, and that we're working on getting those resolved, and that maybe now would not be the best time to take those types of raises, and that it could definitely be reassessed in future years. Then, it's kind of the take I took on that. Now, I completely agree with the fact that if we, if we hold back giving raises for a long period of time, and then we try to jump raises at some point in the future, that that is not a very good system, that you should definitely do more incremental stuff over time. So that is definitely a reasonable approach. I was just, I was comfortable with leaving the pay for the elected officials the same this year.
Just for this year. So, that was the mentality, they just didn't do any type of incremental raises for a decade prior to when I served in 2016. And you're right, between those, that decade, the cost of living went up 18.7% over that 10 years. So, yeah, to sit in that hot seat up there, as anybody elected, to make an increase, 18, whatever, 7 it was, over that 10 years, is ridiculous, and almost next to impossible. But probably, I'll say, that our board did in fact get the increase, I think it was 7.5% the first, the first time, and then 3 the second. So it did go up 10%, which wasn't, we're not gonna go back to the whole entire 18 that they did do. So, but we don't wanna fall in that trap of not doing incremental raises, it's hard to get people to run through these offices with the pay down like that. I mean, this is a very demanding job, the spotlight's on you, the bull's eye's on you. I mean, we keep, keep just kicking that to the curb, I don't know that that's the right way to go, because it's hard to catch up a decade later.
You see, the problem is that, you see, you guys took raises, but you didn't spread the raises out to all the other employees. See, we're not taking raises, but we're spreading raises out to everybody else. There's a difference there.
Well, understand, but we didn't vote it in, the electors did. So just like today, if we decided to vote that in, we'll do that today also. The electors did, not us.
Dan, you think, I think that's reasonable. Any other thoughts on that comment?
Just one final thought, I think it's admirable for anybody who goes into a position of service. Nobody wants, no, we know you didn't ask, you come in here with a sense of duty, I get that personally, I understand. However, you deserve to get paid what you deserve, in, in the elector's opinion. He deserves to get paid what he deserves, whether he's asking for it or not, whether he's gonna wake up the next day and do his job, that's admirable. And the reason he is so humble, and the reason he does his job, 5, what'd he say, 5,000 hours in a year?
Yeah.
Double time, and he didn't ask for a raise, I think that's one of the main reasons he deserves it. I mean, at what point are we taking advantage of such a hard worker?
Point of order, I did make a motion, $70,000 raise, the amount of dress they got.
Yes.
The dollar is, I'm trying to find that in the agenda, where are we at on the agenda?
So we're reviewing the budget with questions and comments.
Okay, so not, we're not in a spot to make?
We had not gone through the summary of resolutions for the supervisor clerk treasurer and trustees, and we're not.
and we're not to the advisory motion as of yet.
Are there two agendas? Because the agenda I have only goes through nine.
There are two agendas, because there are two meetings.
No, I mean, the one I have goes to?
Eleven.
Yeah, some of them go to, we have eleven items on the agenda, and it says for today's, it says trustees' special meeting, so is there a different one that I'm supposed to have?
That was last week.
But, so there's two meetings, all right? But one we're currently in is the Dalton Township Board of Trustees' annual meeting. That one has eleven items on the agenda, including salary resolutions, are in the middle.
And then the second meeting, especially?
The special meeting is nine items, and that will occur after the annual meeting of the electors.
No, here's through, you're looking for?
No, I was looking for the budget, that's fine.
Oh, it's underneath, George, thank you, not a problem.
That's the special meeting that'll occur after the annual meeting. So this is the annual meeting, and after this, do on special.
Mr. Judge, please. Typically, those who have been to these before, here are the others. This is the second biggest turn, I think, and we're not looking at the second biggest one, you know, that we've had, which again, I thank you all for being here, because again, I'm asking you for the board, that I value my portion of this, and I would like to openly ask, again, thank you board for putting all of my requests in the budget, to be seen. Does anybody have any questions for me specifically? I don't wanna miss something, sure I can take them away. Does anybody have any questions of why I did some things in the budget this year?
I don't really have a question on what you did, or why, but what I'm concerned about is if you're leaving, or possibly retiring in four years.
They will be four years.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, when it comes to the time, when it comes time for us to replace you, who are we gonna attract at the wages that they've been paying you? Who are we gonna get? I mean, we got real lucky reviews.
I can tell you that when I applied in April of two thousand and ten, there were twenty-two applicants that got narrowed down to eleven, that got narrowed down to five, that got narrowed down to two, but it was the most unique hiring process I've ever seen in my life. It wasn't bad, it was just very different. I didn't know I had to stand in front of a township board and citizens and sell my soul, but it was, it was definitely unique, but it was wonderful. I have, and it was a goal I had set to the two previous boards prior to that, that I had always planned, succession planning, I always do, if you go to annual court, we have a one-year that you all see, and then we do a three and a five, actually have a three, a five, a seven, and a ten-year plan, and it's already tracked out, it's based on how our villages are, excuse me, how our villages are based, it's how revenues are. So I have, I have a strategic plan, including a transitional phase, when that situation should arise. Again, the rumor has been for years, that's my lovely wife, bought her a camper for her birthday, she felt that I needed to take her camping, and I told her, I have to put it somewhere useful with her. But there is a plan, and again, attracted wages, I can tell you, if, most people who go into the administrative world of the fire service, tend to do it, and there are some that do it for financial gain, but other, the majority of us are really doing it for a mission-driven mindset. I think that, again, the wages that they were, were unreal, there were firefighters making more than I was, and I took the job, and I think can remember that they said, "Are you okay with that?" My exact resounding was, "Yes, I will take that," because I was that passionate about wanting to make Dalton as best as you could, and I think we're almost there, not there yet, but I don't, I don't foresee that in the future, being an issue of attracting someone. It's, what attracts people to areas, something that is special, and I have quite a few friends in the room, which is a very humbling, that took me in as a, to a lake.
You brought me in as a?
Yeah, even if he came from?
You still with fists, right, they're freaking along like, bowing heads at Gannata Lakes, but I don't think you will see an issue with that, I think that because this community is so diverse, and maybe you mentioned, we have, we have some of the emotionally neat things that people don't realize in our little township, from the only amusement park, to nine inland lakes, people think it's four, I was like, nine. Nine inland lakes that are governed by the DNR, to three hundred and sixteen acres of national forest that we protect, to the larger stretch of any department in Meskeen County of US thirty-one, Whitehall Road, and we did the RSA study on, on Polton Road, we had four hundred and nine accidents, created eighteen fatalities in three years. So we're quite the hub if people do that, so I think that when we get to that stage, which I don't wanna think about, 'cause I'm tired, I don't think that will be an issue, I really don't. That's all I have to say.
Yes, I would like to at least apologize to the chief, 'cause he didn't know anything about this, so I don't mean to throw a lot on him right now, but?
Mr. Barnes, I'm fine with that, and then I humbly thank you for that, but as an official and an elector, again, I will respectfully abstain, because I don't, I don't believe in that, but if I may, back to my original statement, does anybody have any other questions about what I've done this year in our board budget from the fire supervisors, I can answer?
It was the initial idea that it may be a fast meeting, 'cause we had the working session before, it's obviously turned into something much longer, and if Alan has to leave on a call, we wanna get any of those questions handled.
That's all I have to say.
Seeing none, on this, we are still in review of budget with questions and comments. Obviously, most of it is over personnel and salaries. Is there anything else before we move on to the salary resolution part, and then we'll go with the full budget recommendation to the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to salary resolution for supervisors, there is obviously some, and each of these salary resolutions for supervisor clerk treasurer and trustees are separate, so they can be talked about separately. Obviously, there's, there's some debate on which way we should go on this, but does anyone want to make a motion? Yes?
I make a motion that the salary resolution for the supervisors increased by one point three percent, which would be an increase of five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
We have a motion?
I second the motion.
I think I heard from out in the audience, that, yeah, Jennifer Barnes, is there any discussion on that?
I'm sorry, what was I, Mr. Barnes, the amount?
One point three percent, which comes up, I got to do that.
Five fifty-nine cents.
Okay, so the salary would be forty-three thousand, five ninety-nine, fifty-two.
The increase comes up to five fifty-nine, fifty-two.
Yep, yep, so it's four, forty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars.
You took fifteen hundred bucks for the full-time elected official, you had that a lot.
All right, so any other discussion?
I can say that Jeffrey puts in a lot of hours here, I can say that he is well worth what he is giving me. Thank you, Tony.
I'll second that, one point three percent raise.
All right, and we, so we have a second. Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We have similar motion, but this one is for the clerk. Does anyone want to make a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that the salary resolution for clerk also was increased by the cost of living, one point three percent, comes up to five fifty-nine, fifty-two.
Do I have a, do I have a support?
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Everyone opposed, same indication? Hearing none, motion passes. Motion for the treasurer?
I motion to make a, no, I'm just kidding, I make a motion to make the treasurer, one point three percent increase, which is the cost of living, comes up to five fifty-nine, fifty-two.
Do I have a support?
Yep, I support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Everyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And trustees, Mr. Barnes?
I make a motion to bring the yearly stipend for the trustees to five thousand dollars a year, which would increase the budget from sixteen thousand a year to twenty thousand per year.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Support, yeah. Jennifer Barnes? And any discussion on that? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We're through the salary portion, and now we are up to for the elected officials, we're making the motion to accept, reject, or modify the budget, going to the board, and we had a motion by Kerry early in the meeting for the resolutions for seventy thousand dollars a year for the fire chief, and eighteen dollars per hour for the full-time maintenance staff. Is that the motion that you want to stick with?
Yes.
And Mr. Barnes?
That motion hasn't been seconded, correct? Not yet.
Not yet.
Anyone want to second that motion? Claire, Mark?
Senator Teresa Brown, say a little version.
And do we have any discussion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to the modification of the budget, to reflect seventy thousand dollars for the fire chief and eighteen fifty for full-time maintenance.
And do we have a support for that motion?
Yes.
Of course.
So we have two motions on the floor.
I'll rescind mine.
All right, first motion rescinded. Motion on the floors for seventy thousand dollars per year for the fire chief and eighteen fifty per hour for the full-time maintenance. We have a motion and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Mr. Barnes?
I make a motion to accept the budget as amended.
Do I have a support? Hearing support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. It is the motion that will then carry to the special meeting directly after this. Do I have a motion to adjourn the annual meeting of the electors?
So move.
So move, do I have a support? Support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. This meeting will be a full meeting. I call to order the special meeting for the board of trustees, and I would like to run this as a full meeting, if you would all join me for?
The allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. If you can get a roll call?
Nola?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Kerry?
Here.
Gerald?
Here.
Laurie, here. Jeffrey?
Here.
And this is not an annual meeting of the electors, so it is a special board meeting, so we'll have the normal public comment section, sessions, and that is how this agenda will operate. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make that motion.
Kerry makes the motion, do I have a support?
Support.
Nola supports, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, agenda is approved. We do have past meeting minutes, and do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Make that motion.
Kerry makes the motion, do I have a support?
No support.
Hearing support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll go with a vote, is everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, past meeting minutes are approved. At this time, we do have a public comment section, so if anyone would like to make public comments, instead of like the annual meeting of the electors, where we're openly discussing, if you would please come forward to the lectern, yes, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, Troy Barnes, fifty-nine, twenty, Middlemore Lane, just wanted to say thank you to everyone showing up, it's important that we attend these meetings, and I think everyone for showing up in unanimous vote to increase the salaries, has directly proportioned based on the job, so thank you for that.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the resolution. So the budget has been amended, and this resolution will be to accept that amended budget. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two, one, dash twelve, to adopt the budget as amended.
Kerry makes the motion, do I have a support?
Support.
Nola supports, is there discussion?
Okay, so I wanna make sure, so you're, you're adopting the budget as amended at the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
No.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes, and we do have a second public comment section, if anyone would like to come up and make a comment at the lectern. Seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment? If Nola makes a motion to adjourn, do I have a support?
Support.
Hearing support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned, thank you very much for coming.